Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the President and Board of Trustees of Village of Tinley Park, Cookinwell County, held on Tuesday, December 17, 2024, starting at 6:04 P. M. Everyone, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Brady?
Here.
Trustee Brennan?
Present.
Trustee Mahoney?
Present.
Trustee Mueller?
Here.
Trustee Shaw?
Present.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
President Glotz?
Present. Item number one, is there a motion to consider the approval of tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
At this time, I'd like to make a superseding motion for the agenda. I move we continue items nine through fourteen on today's agenda regarding the annexation, zoning, special use, and final plat of subdivision for the Brookside Creek Retail Center to the Village Board Meeting on January 7, 2025, to allow for further review and discussion.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, Mr. Mueller. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item one A, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have item number two.
We got a vote on.
No, I mean...
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, we have a motion and a second, so I'm just going to call.
Yeah, just go ahead.
Okay. Roll call for item one, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Item number two, is there a motion to consider approval of the minutes of the special village board meeting held on December 2, 2024?
I'll make the motion.
I will second.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item two, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Can I have a motion to consider adopting Resolution 2024 dash R dash 145, recognizing Albert J. Seeger's outstanding Tinley Park volunteer upon his retirement?
So moved.
I will second.
Thank you. The village would like to recognize Mr. Seeger for his forty-plus years of volunteerism in the village of Tinley Park. A resolution recognizing Albert Seeger's outstanding Tinley Park volunteer upon his retirement, whereas Albert J. Seeger's fondly referred to as Big Al, was born on September 25, 1954, and grew up in the Inglewood and Rosewood communities of Chicago until he relocated with his parents and two brothers to Tinley Park at the age of sixteen. And whereas Al graduated from Chicago Christian High School in 1972, and after high school, continued his education to Washburn Trade School in Chicago and became an apprentice carpenter. And whereas Al married Donna Bextein Seeger's in 1977, and they have two children, Jeremy and Jamie, and granddaughter Lacy. Donna's parents were longtime residents of Tinley Park and owners of Bextine Construction. Al worked, whereas Al worked part-time at Bentonhausen Hardware in Tinley Park while attending high school and trade school. Soon after becoming an apprentice carpenter, an economic recession and a new home construction left Al choosing to work full-time at Bentonhausen Hardware, where he remained for fourteen years. And whereas Al left the hardware store to begin Tinley Park disposal, a refuse company providing residential and commercial service to Tinley Park and the surrounding communities in 1983. Tinley Disposal merged with New Way Disposal in 1990 to form a larger company serving a much larger area. As vice president of Tinley New Way, Al enjoyed being involved with the communities he served and found himself giving most of his spare time to the Tinley Park community where he lived. And whereas Al has been quintessential volunteer, taking on many volunteer roles, most notably Tinley Park Oktoberfest, where he started in 1979 and served as the president from 1993 to 1997, and vice president from 1988 to 1993, director of the Tinley Park Chamber of Commerce in 1987, where he served as a member since 1983. He was director of the Tinley Park South Condo Association, a member of the Tinley Park Environmental Commission in 1989, chairman of the Tinley Park Millennium Commission in 1999, a member of the Oak Park Avenue Main Street Association, and commissioner with the Tinley Park Human Resources Commission, starting in 1993, which evolved into the Community Resource Commission, and today is the Tinley Park Marketing Commission. It's a lot of commissions. Whereas Al had an active and oftentimes leadership role in the plethora of Tinley Park's special events, including Tinley Park Oktoberfest, the Tinley Park Brew and Vine Festival, Tinley Park's New Year's Eve Celebration in 2000 and 2001, the Discover Tinley Expo, the Deer Fest, Santa's Arrival to Tinley Park, the Tinley Toyland Parade and Photos with Santa, Holiday Horse and Carriage Rides on Oak Park Avenue, and Oak Park Avenue Block Party, the Annual Chamber of Commerce Golf Outing, the Rita Brud Memorial Scholarship, the Tinley Park Irish Parade, and the Tinley Park Memorial Day Parade celebrating the one-hundredth anniversary of our volunteer fire department. Whereas Al has been recognized through numerous community awards, including the Tinley Park JC's Outstanding Businessperson Award in 1984, the Chamber of Commerce Outstanding Businessperson Award in 1992, the Sam Walton Walmart Business Leader Award in 1988, which included a $500 grant presented to the Chamber of Commerce in Al Seeger's name, and the Chamber of Commerce Outstanding Civil Leader Award in 1999. Whereas throughout his forty-plus years of volunteerism in Tinley Park, Al could often be seen driving his Ford King pickup magic truck around town, outfitted with just about anything needed to construct or fix or dismantle something, and was affectionately referred to as the go-to guy for special events. Whereas, the village is eternally grateful for Al's exemplary dedication, commitment, generosity, and unmatched spirit of volunteerism to the Tinley Park community, and wishes him good health and, most importantly, happiness in his retirement. Now therefore be it resolved by the President, Clerk, and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Tinley Park, Cookinwell County, Illinois, that Albert J. Seeger's be celebrated for his outstanding volunteerism and four decades of dedicated volunteerism to the village of Tinley Park, and that Wednesday, December 18, 2024, be recognized as Al Seeger's Day in the village of Tinley Park. Adopted the seventeenth day of December, 2024, signed by myself, village president, Michael W. Glotz, village clerk, Nancy M. O'Connor, trustees William P. Brady, Dennis A. Mahoney, Kennedy Shaw, William A. Brennan, Michael G. Mueller, and Colleen Sullivan. But it wouldn't be the same... Hold on. It wouldn't be the same with our Mayor Zabrocki playing a role in this, as you could see. He apologizes that him and the First Lady cannot be here, and he asked me to read something to you. This one's not as bad as I usually could be. Unfortunately, Emily and I cannot be with you tonight to celebrate your many years of dedicated service to the people of Tinley Park, but our heartfelt spirit is there with you, your family, and your friends. Where do I begin? I'm not sure when we met, because you have been around as long as I can remember, but I do believe it was when we first moved to Tinley Park and purchased a new washer dryer from Bentonhausen Hardware, and you installed it. That goes back to the very early 70s, and as the saying goes, the rest is history. It's been a history richly permeated with dedication, personal and family sacrifices, plus a genuine desire for the people to enjoy their community. You've been a very active member of the Human Resources Commission almost from its inception. You were the quiet one that everyone would turn to to find out how the project would proceed. You were instrumental in the Discover Tinley Expo, which was designed to showcase the availability of opportunities in our village. Some of these opportunities were the Bremen Mall on 159th, the school district in 140, and finally, the convention center. An organized challenge at every level, and Al Seeger's came through every single time. There were other projects that you organized and followed through to their successful completion, but the one that really stands out is our Oktoberfest. You stepped in when the future of the event was questionable. The challenges were almost insurmountable, but once again, you worked the Al Seeger's magic and produced a very successful series of events. There is one story that I have to relate to in a way that describes the extent of your creativity and your energy. At one of the events somewhere, you found a man who had a pet alligator. I don't know how he remembers this stuff. He was about six or seven feet long. It was quite an attraction. People loved it, especially the kids. However, the temperature that night was dropping down into the low 30s, and the alligator's life was a concern. Alligators don't like defrost. So you evaluated the situation, you went to the legendary Al Seeger's garage, and you returned with a propane heater and made a friendship with the alligator. There are other countless stories, but one element is common throughout. Al Seeger's was always there for the people of Tinley Park, and sometimes an alligator. In my eighty-three years in various roles as a teacher, counselor, trustee, state rep, mayor, and ordinary citizen, I have never met a more dedicated person in terms of family, community, and the people in this community. I also wish to thank your family, Donna, Jeremy, and Jamie, for sharing Al with all of us. I know he sometimes was away from home to do his thing, but his thing added to the lives of countless people. Finally, Big Al, your retirement. What are you going to do? Finally, take time for yourself? Enjoy your family and grandkids? Enjoy the memories of a lifetime of dedication to the people of Tinley Park, knowing that you made a difference in the lives of countless people? Enjoy that big gulp of Pepsi. You've earned it, and beyond measure. Words are meaningless when it comes to thank you. Your friend, Emily and Ed Zabrocki. So would you like to say a couple words first? I don't know how you can follow that.
Yeah, that's a tough one to follow. Thank you, everybody. It's a privilege to be here tonight, remembering a lot of years, a lot of projects. I want to thank my owner from Homewood Disposal and our secretary from Homewood Disposal, Tom Yonker, and Christine Elkman came here tonight. You know, they helped grow my relationship with Tinley Park, allowing me to go to some of the events and take a little time away from the office and my normal duties and spend some time working with the village of Tinley Park. I currently work with Homewood Disposal, and I am somewhat semi-retired for a few more months, and then I will be enjoying full-time retirement with my family, my son Jeremy and Donna, my granddaughter Lacy and my daughter Jamie. And I see where Mayor Zabrocki dug up the old picture there. That was after one of the elections that he won, and he coaxed me into smoking a cigar. And of course, he got a picture of it, and I thought that was long gone, but no, he kept it.
He's giving me microfiche from floods.
I don't know what else to say. You know, I've helped out with a lot of elections and helped out with so many projects around town. Been glad to answer questions along the way and give a little guidance where I can, and certainly want to commend the people that put the Christmas market together. Amanda, very dedicated, very organized, reminded me of myself within my younger years. She was there through the thick and the cold, like I was, through the rain and the snow and the wind, and she pulled it off. And congratulations, Amanda, on a great event. I don't know what else to say, but if you've got any questions, go ahead.
We had this framed, so if we could, if you want to come up with the board, we'd
Do your commission and family.
Ron?
Come on, Ron.
Come on, Ron.
Come on, Ron.
We could get you a police escort.
Rick Stur.
I didn't know. I'm starting this security.
I know. Good.
There's not the house.
Well, she said they have a hotel.
Yes, Pam.
James, help out with Chris.
It's hard.
I don't think.
Thank you very much. I really do. I gotta go on the other side of the aisle.
Thank you.
Good.
Okay.
That's why he could sit here.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item three, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next, we have item number four. Would anyone like to make a motion to consider appointing Patrick St. John to the position of Division Police Commander?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Patrick has been with Tinley Park Police Department for twenty-six years, spending the last nine as a sergeant in the patrol division. Prior to his supervisory duties, he held several specialty assignments, including TAC, Unit Squad Leader for Elias Mobile Field Force, and is a member of the Sol Suburban Major Crimes Task Force. His leadership, problem-solving, and teamwork strengths make him a strong candidate for the Division Police Commander position. He holds a Bachelor Arts in Sociology. Please appointing, or please consider appointing PSJ as Division Police Commander, effective December 17, 2024. Any comments from the board?
Congratulations, Pat.
Thank you.
We didn't vote yet. Congratulations, Pat. Happy to say I know you. You guys are going to do great things together with the command staff, and it's an honor to be able to appoint you. You want to take photos with your family?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
It gets so quiet in here when we take pictures.
They're dogs.
Favorite uncle.
Oh, boy.
Why not move?
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for showing up. I want to thank my wife, my daughters, for her support. I couldn't be here. I wouldn't be here without their support. I just want to thank everybody for showing up tonight. Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, do you please call the roll?
Roll call for item four, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan? Yes.
That motion carries. Next, we have item number five. Could I please have a motion to consider appointing Brian Bishop to the position of Division Police Commander?
So moved.
Second.
Brian joined Tinley Park Police Department nearly twenty-four years ago and has spent seven years as a sergeant overseeing the patrol operations for six years and administrative functions for the last year. Before his supervisory duties, he held numerous specialty assignments, including field training officer, evidence technician, firearms instructor, national and state certified reconstruction specialist, and Citizens Police Academy instructor, amongst others. His leadership, crisis management, and strategic planning strengths make him a strong candidate for the Division Police Commander position. He holds a Bachelor Arts in Criminal Justice and graduating from Northwestern School of Police Staff in Command in January of 2025. I'd like to ask everyone to consider appointing Brian Bishop as Division Police Commander, effective December 17, 2025. Would anyone from the board like to make a comment?
2024.
Oh, 24, sorry. Comments from anyone?
No.
Only thing I'd like to add, anyone that's at any of our events, two people that always stick out to me that are literally moving all over the place, and the two fastest walkers that we have that were sergeants-
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item three, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next we have item number four. Would anyone like to make a motion to consider appointing Patrick St. John to the position of Division Police Commander?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Patrick has been with Tinley Park Police Department for twenty-six years, spending the last nine as a sergeant in the patrol division. Prior to his supervisory duties, he held several specialty assignments, including TAC, Unit Squad Leader for Elias Mobile Field Force, and is a member of the South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force. His leadership, problem-solving, and teamwork strengths make him a strong candidate for the Division Police Commander position. He holds a Bachelor Arts in Sociology. Please appointing, or please consider appointing PSJ as Division Police Commander effective December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. Any comments from the board?
Congratulations, Pat.
Thank you.
We didn't vote yet. Well, congratulations, Pat. Happy to say I know you. You guys are gonna do great things together with the command staff, and it's an honor to be able to appoint you. You wanna take photos with your family?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
It gets so quiet in here when we take pictures.
The dogs.
Why not move? Um, thank you everyone for showing up. I wanna thank my wife, my daughters, for their support. I couldn't be here. I wouldn't be here without their support. I just wanna thank everybody for showing up tonight. Thank you, I really appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, do you please call the roll?
Roll call for item four, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next we have item number five. Could I please have a motion to consider appointing Brian Bishop to the position of Division Police Commander?
So moved.
Second.
Brian joined Tinley Park Police Department nearly twenty-four years ago and has spent seven years as a sergeant overseeing the patrol operations for six years and administrative functions for the last year. Before his supervisory duties, he held numerous specialty assignments, including Field Training Officer, Evidence Technician, Firearms Instructor, National and State Certified Reconstruction Specialist, and Citizens Police Academy Instructor, amongst others. His leadership, crisis management, and strategic planning strengths make him a strong candidate for the Division Police Commander position. He holds a Bachelor Arts in Criminal Justice and graduating from Northwestern School of Police Staff and Command in January of two thousand twenty-five. I'd like to ask everyone to consider appointing Brian Bishop as Division Police Commander effective December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Would anyone from the board like to make a comment?
Two thousand twenty-four.
Oh, twenty-four, sorry. Comments from anyone?
No.
Only thing I'd like to add, um, anyone that's at any of our events, um, two people that always stick out to me that are literally moving all over the place, and, uh, the two fastest walkers that we have that were sergeants were, uh, Brian Bishop and Sergeant Panerik. Anytime you go to an event, they are literally everywhere, so, uh, we're very lucky to have you as a commander. Tom's gonna be lucky to have you working with him side by side more, so, uh, thank you for applying.
All right, ready? Got it, thank you.
Yes, real quick, thank you to, uh, the village for believing in me and for all this time. To my wife and my girls who have been there for really quite a bit when I haven't been around. I didn't wanna get emotional, but it is. And, um, thank you to the women and women that I served with. Uh, I owe all this to you, okay? Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item five, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Uh, next we have item number six. Can I have a motion to consider recognizing the promotion of Michael Harmon to Police Sergeant?
So moved.
Second.
Officer Michael Harmon has been a full-time Tinley Park Police Officer for over nine years. During his tenure, he has served as Field Training Officer, Evidence Technician, Firearms Instructor, Juvenile Officer, and South Suburban Emergency Response Team Member. Additionally, Officer Harmon served for four years in the Marine Corps, including three tours in Iraq, hearing the Bachelor's Degree in Kinesiology from Western Illinois University. Is there any comment from the board?
Congrats, Mike.
What we could do if you like is wait till after the swearing-in ceremony, Mike, after you do the swearing-in.
It's the next item.
Yeah, it's the next item, the swear-in, and then take photos with your family. Any comment from the board? Anyone from the Police Department like to make a comment on Mike's appointment?
I will, Mike.
Sure.
Congratulations to Sergeant Harmon. We're gonna be very well served. He's an excellent leader. We, uh, we presented a very strong slate of leaders here for the village tonight, and, uh, really appreciate the board's recognition. So, uh, we're gonna be very well served by everyone, and Sergeant Harmon, and we're looking forward to getting them on the streets and taking their new roles. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations, Mike. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item six, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next we have item number seven, trustee Bill Brennan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the village clerk to conduct a swearing-in ceremony for Police Sergeant Michael Harmon.
I'll make the motion?
I'll second it.
Hi, state your name.
I'm Michael Harmon.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
the Constitution of the State of Illinois
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
ordinances of the Village of Tinley Park
Ordnances of the Village of Tinley Park.
and that I will faithfully discharge
No, faithfully discharge.
the duties of Police Sergeant
The duties of Police Sergeant.
according to the best of my ability
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I do have to say something. I'm gonna make it short, because we're about to talk to this little guy here. Uh, I'm only gonna name-drop one person, my wife, Brittany Ann. Her unconditional love and support allows me to do the job that I love and serve the people that I love serving with. Everyone else is gonna get lumped in together. Don't take offense. So, the entire village, uh, the Police Department, my misfits in the back of the room that I love to serve with. You guys took in a boy from the south, uh, took him in as one of your own. I didn't know how it was gonna be up here, because y'all ain't got very much cornfields, but, uh... I feel at home. I'm happy to call this place home. I'm happy to serve with awesome coworkers. My bosses and my coworkers, past and present, taught me how to do this job, um, the right way. Um, they pushed me in the right direction. Even when it really wasn't at the top of my list of things to do, they pushed me to do this at the right time and for the right reasons. So, I'm happy for them. I'm happy to serve with them, want to lead by example. Um, and this village is awesome. Thank you for taking me in. It feels like home. We're happy to raise our family here. Thank you.
Come on, buddy. Give him his hat.
Got it, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Congratulations again. Got it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roll call for item seven, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan? Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next we have item number eight. May I have a motion to consider approval of the Consent Agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
The Consent Agenda, the Consent Agenda items have been publicly posted and available for review on the agenda for this meeting. Would anyone from the board like any of these meetings, or, uh, any of these items removed from the Consent Agenda tonight? Let the record reflect, there are none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item eight, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next we have item number fifteen, trustee Dennis Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please consider adopting ordinance two zero two four dash O dash zero six six, granting Action Behavior Centers a special use permit at eighty-one fifty-one West One Hundred and Eighty-Third Street, Suite A.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Go ahead.
Thanks.
The special use permit allows a special needs therapy institution use within the existing M-one PD, um, zoning district. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on December fifth of two thousand twenty-four and voted six to zero to recommend approval for the use of permit in accordance with the listed plans, the recommended condition, and drafted findings of fact in the staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Dennis. Is there, are there, are there any questions from the board? Are there any comments from the public on item fifteen? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item fifteen, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Lisa. Real quick, for anyone, if they're here for the Brookside Glen items, that was nine through fourteen, we tabled that at the beginning of the meeting for, um, we continued it to January seventh. Next we have item sixteen, trustee Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to consider adopting ordinance two zero two four dash O dash zero six seven, granting a parking variation from the zoning ordinance at nine five five zero Hundred and Seventy-Nine Street.
I'll second it.
Thanks. The variation allows for a reduction of, uh, required...
Wait, make sure we did that right.
Sorry.
So you said you made a, when you started, you did...
I made the most, yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Dennis. Thank you. The variation allows for a reduction of required onsite parking associated with the reconfiguration of the site to add additional drive-through lane queue, queuing space for Jack in the Box. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on December fifth of two thousand twenty-four and voted six to zero to recommend approval of the variation with the plans and finding of fact as noted in the staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Dennis. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Is anyone from Jack in the Box here?
Hi, thank you for having me. My name's Joe Bermudez. I'm the applicant for this project. Uh, just appreciate the board for, uh, considering our project and the request for variation for parking uh, in order for us to increase the amount of drive-through lane stacking, which will help contain traffic on-site, provide a more safer traffic flow for everybody in general who comes to, uh, attend the Jack in the Box restaurant.
Thank you. Hey, excuse me, Donna? I think he's here for Al. Thanks. Are there any comments?
Glad to see this moving along.
Yeah.
A lot of people are very excited about this, so...
Yeah.
Yes, likewise.
Never thought...
We like our food.
I never thought I'd see another Jack in the Box back in the South Suburban.
I know, I'm loving it. My kids are so excited.
Do we have any, uh, opening date or projection?
Uh, currently, uh, we are continuing to work through our plan review process with the Building Department, um, hoping to get those approvals, uh, in the very near future, and they will be striking construction, uh, shortly thereafter. Don't know the anticipated open date quite yet, but I'm imagining it would be, um, a few months out from when they, uh, break ground on construction, so...
Great, thank you. Thank you very much.
I'd just like to make a real quick comment here. I welcome you also, looking forward to it. Um, I, I just wanna make a, a comment with respect to our, our parking requirements. This is, uh, I've spoken up before about, uh, that I, I think they're too, uh, too strict. We have, we require too much. Given the variation here, I think this is gonna be a good one for us to, uh, to look at. Having seen the Plan Commission, um, meeting and reading the report, I agree with it. I don't think it's gonna be a problem at all. I think it's gonna be just fine, but I think it's a, a good, good one for us to observe as a, a proof of, proof of that case.
I think you can. Are there any comments from the public, from Jack in the Box? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item sixteen, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Good luck. Jack in the Box is back. Item number seventeen, trustee Dennis Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we consider adopting Resolution two zero two four dash R dash one five zero, approving the revised plat, uh, subdivision for certain property located at North Street and Sixty-seventh Court.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Go ahead, Dennis.
The petitioner is seeking approval of the revised Harmony Square final plat of subdivision for the townhome portion of the development. No changes to the development plans or phasing are proposed. The Plan Commission voted six to zero on December fifth of two thousand twenty-four to recommend, recommend approval of the final plat dated on twelve nine two thousand twenty-four, subject to final review and approval by the village engineer and village attorney. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Dennis. Are there any questions from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item seventeen, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Item number eighteen, trustee Mahoney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we consider adopting ordinance two zero two four dash O dash zero six eight annexing the zero point zero six acre property north of one hundred and ninety-first Street to the Village of Tinley Park.
I will second.
Go ahead Dennis.
Thanks. The petitioner requests annexation of the property under the allowances of the Illinois Municipal Code. The two thousand six hundred and fifty square foot vacant parcel is contingent to the Village of Tinley Park and will be annexed under the R one zoning district by default and rezoned to B three as part of the corresponding zoning request for a larger forty-eight acre interstate sports dome development. The annexation will be effective on the dates of passage. This item was reviewed at the committee of the whole meeting held prior to this meeting. This ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you Dennis. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Are there any from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item eighteen, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you everyone. Item nineteen, trustee Mahoney.
Thank you. I move we consider adopting ordinance two zero two four dash O dash zero six nine approving a map amendment to rezone certain property located at seventy-six hundred one hundred and ninety-first Street from O R I and R one to B three.
I will second.
Thank you, go ahead Dennis.
Thank you. The petitioner seeks to rezone forty-eight acres of property located at seventy-six hundred one hundred and ninety-first Street from O R I and from R one zoning districts to B three zoning district. The purpose of the rezoning will allow for the multi-phase commercial development proposed at the interstate, as the interstate sports dome. The plan commission held a public hearing on December fifth of two thousand twenty-four and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the map amendment in accordance with the listed plans and finding of fact in the staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you Dennis. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public on item number nineteen? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Roll call for item nineteen, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you everyone. Next we have item number twenty, Dennis Mahoney.
Thank you. I move we consider adopting ordinance two zero two four dash O dash zero seven zero granting a special use permit to establish the interstate sports dome planned unit development and preliminary P U D plat at seventy-six hundred one hundred and ninety-first Street.
I'll second it.
Thank you, go ahead Dennis.
Thanks. The special use will allow multi-phase commercial development of sports, retail, and dining uses. The plan commission held a public hearing on December fifth of two thousand twenty-four and voted five to zero to recommend approval of the special use in accordance with the listed plans, the recommended conditions, exceptions, and findings of fact as listed in the staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you Dennis. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Item twenty. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item twenty, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you everyone. Item number twenty-one, trustee Dennis Mahoney.
Thank you. I move we consider adopting ordinance two zero two four dash O dash zero seven one approving the interstate sports dome final plat of consolidation and platification.
I will second.
Thank you. The petitioner has proposed final plat approval for the interstate sports dome final plat of consolidation dated November sixth of two thousand twenty-four and the platification dated October twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty-four for forty feet width of the former Seventy-sixth Avenue roadway. The plan commission reviewed the final plats on December fifth of two thousand twenty-four and voted five to zero to recommend approval with the conditions as listed in the staff report. This ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you Dennis. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
No, I'll just say that I think, really excited to see this project get off the ground. This is a great location with the growth of youth sports. I think this is going to be a fantastic addition to the community. The location's great and the access is great, so I'm really looking forward to seeing this thing get moving. Good work to village staff and everyone involved. Anyone else?
Yeah, I echo what you said Bill, this is going to be a great project. There's a lot more there than just the dome. They're going to have restaurants, they're going to have a strip, I think fifty thousand square feet if I remember, strip center. It's going to be a great project, especially no one's been able to get this gray stone property to work for a very long time, so we're happy with the team that Dan Gutierrez put together to make this work, so. You guys are with Dan, correct? Yeah, we just talked about you today, Dan, and I, would you like to add anything to the, to this or no? I know you did a lot of heavy lifting.
Steve Vernon with Vernon Development representing G K Development, and yeah, we're just thrilled to be a part of this project. We think it is going to be a great asset. We've got a few steps approvals from the Will County Highway Department in designing the permanent traffic signals, but we're very excited and hopefully break ground here in the spring.
Great, thank you. You helped them a lot, and so I appreciate it. You've been Tinleyan around for a long time.
I've been hanging around the community for a while.
You have, so thank you for all of your help.
Thank you, thank you to staff, and thank you to the trustees and you too, Mayor.
Yep, we're going to get it going for them, just on the phone with them because he's in Mexico.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll for the last one, Nicole Roll for the sports dome, item twenty-one.
Roll call for item twenty-one, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work on that with Dan. Merry Christmas to you too. Item number twenty-two, finally someone different, Michael Mueller.
I move we consider adopting resolution twenty twenty-four dash R dash one four six approving a purchase between the Village of Tinley Park and Office Revolution, Romar Supply, My Beer Guy Inc., and O S A Integrated Solutions for the Harmony Square Purchase of Kitchen, Furniture, Fixtures, and Equipment.
I'll second it.
Please consider approving F F and E initial purchase on behalf of the licensee. This item was discussed at the committee of the hall held just prior to this meeting and is eligible for adoption.
Thanks Mike. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public on item twenty-two? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item twenty-two, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you everyone. Next we have item twenty-three, trustee Bill Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the board consider adopting resolution twenty twenty-four dash R dash one five two approving a renewal of the insurance policy with the Illinois Municipal League Risk Management Association.
Is there a motion? So moved?
I will second.
Thank you, go ahead Bill.
Village has received our annual renewal quote for insurance coverages and risk management services from our provider, the Illinois Municipal League Risk Management Association. The renewal for two thousand twenty-five is a minimum premium of one million one hundred and nine thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars with the potential maximum contribution not to exceed one million seven hundred and fifty-two thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars. This item was discussed at the committee of the hall meeting held prior to this meeting. This resolution is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Are any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item twenty-three, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you everyone. Next we have item twenty-four, trustee Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we adopt ordinance two zero two four dash O dash zero five four levying taxes for corporate purposes for the Village of Tinley Park two thousand twenty-four tax levy year.
I will second.
Go ahead.
Thank you. The property tax levy request for two thousand twenty-four will be in the total amount of thirty million four hundred and eighty-four thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. This reflects a zero percent increase and remains unchanged for both the village and the library from the prior year's levy requests. The proposed two thousand twenty-four levy was discussed at the village board at the committee of the hall meeting on November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and the library board on November twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. This ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, Ken. Are there any questions from the board? Any comments?
Glad to see a zero.
Stress the fact that it's zero.
Good job.
Good job.
Agree, thank you to the board too for holding the line while the other agencies keep increasing it five percent. This is the second year in a row with a zero percent increase, and actually I think three years ago it was only one percent. So over the course of three years, it's only gone up one percent. Want to really thank the board and our staff and all the businesses that come into town that produce all the sales tax and extra real estate tax that make it possible for the village to hold the line, so great work on everyone all around. Thank you very much. Are there any?
Could I just make an extra comment on that?
Yep.
Thank you. So just on that note, I mean, we've seen a lot of examples of good, solid fiscal management that's been going on here, and it's, you're right, while a lot of other taxing bodies have been increasing, we've been in a position fortunately that we can hold the line, and I will say there are even some taxing bodies that likewise did not increase, and frankly, I don't think they're in as good a fiscal position, and perhaps the wise thing for them would have been to increase. So we are, we're very fortunate that we have a professional team here that's been holding the line, and that puts us in a position to be able to do that and still be responsible.
Thank you, Ken. Are there was something I wanted to add about increasing the levy, but I'm going to wait until staff comment to touch on that. Anyone else? Are there any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item twenty-four, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you everyone. Next we have item number five, consider adopting ordinance two zero, I'm sorry, trustee Shaw for twenty-five.
Got to give me something to do over here.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion adopting ordinance two zero two four dash zero dash O dash zero five five abating all of the two thousand twenty-four tax levy requirements as provided for in the notification of sale of general obligation bonds series two thousand twenty-one A and taxable general obligation refunding bonds series two thousand twenty-one B, and the direction for abatement of taxes dated December second, two thousand twenty-one in connection with the issuance of eight million nine hundred and forty thousand dollars in general obligation bonds series twenty twenty-one A of the Village of Tinley Park, Cook, and Will Counties, Illinois.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, go ahead Ken.
Thank you. This ordinance abates all seven hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and forty-six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars of the two thousand twenty-four tax levy requirements for the series two thousand twenty-one A bonds as contained in both the notification of sale of general obligation bond series two thousand twenty-one A and the taxable general obligation refunding bonds series two thousand twenty-one B, as well as the direction for abatement of taxes dated December second, two thousand twenty-one in connection with the issuance of the eight million nine hundred and forty thousand dollars general obligation bond series two thousand twenty-one A. The bond issue supports infrastructure improvements for the village water and sewer system, and the abated debt service will be paid by the utility revenues of those funds. Is that it? Let's see, yeah, I guess I can read them here. The water retail fund, four hundred and eighty-one thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents. Water wholesale fund, sixty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighteen cents. Sewer fund, one hundred and ninety-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars and four cents. This abatement item was provided at the committee of the hall meeting held on November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and this ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Roll call for item twenty-five, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you everyone. Item number twenty-six, trustee Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion adopting ordinance two zero two four dash O dash zero five six abating a portion of the two thousand twenty-four tax levy requirements as provided for in the notification of sale of general obligation bonds series two thousand twenty-one A and taxable general obligation refunding bonds series two thousand twenty-one B, and the direction for abatement of taxes dated December second, two thousand twenty-one in connection with the issuance of five million nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in taxable general obligation refunding bonds series two thousand twenty-one B of the Village of Tinley Park, Cook, and Will Counties, Illinois.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, go ahead Ken.
This ordinance abates a portion of the two thousand twenty-four tax levy requirements for the series two thousand twenty-one B bonds as contained in both the notification of sale general obligation bond series two thousand twenty-one A and the taxable general obligation refunding bonds twenty twenty, series two thousand twenty-one B, and the direction for abatement of taxes dated December second, two thousand twenty-one in connection with the issuance of the five million nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in taxable general obligation refunding bonds series two thousand twenty-one B. This ordinance abates six hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars of the two thousand twenty-four tax levy requirements of nine hundred and sixty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the series two thousand twenty-one B bonds, leaving three hundred and fifty thousand dollars as the remaining two thousand twenty-four tax levy amount. The sources and amounts of the funds to support this abatement are as follows. Hotel tax debt service reserve, three hundred and eighty-four thousand three hundred dollars. Surtax capital project fund, sixty-one thousand seven hundred and nineteen and eighty, sixty-one thousand seven hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty cents. Sewer fund, one hundred and thirty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and thirteen cents. Stormwater management fund, seventeen thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents. New Bremen Tiff District, ten thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-six cents. This abatement was, this abatement item was provided at the committee of the hall meeting held on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and this ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, trustee Shaw. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item twenty-six, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries, thank you everyone. Item twenty-seven, trustee Shaw.
All right. I come motion adopting ordinance twenty twenty-four dash O dash fifty-seven abating all of the two thousand twenty-four tax levy requirements as provided for in the notification of the sale of general obligation bond series two thousand twenty-four dated July twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four in connection with the issuance of forty-six million five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars in general obligation bonds series two thousand twenty-four of the Village of Tinley Park, Cook, and Will County, Illinois.
I'll second that motion.
Go ahead Ken.
Thank you. The two thousand twenty-four tax levy requirement for this bond issue is established at three million six hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and The two thousand twenty-four tax levy requirement for this bond issue is established at three million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. And the village is in a position to abate all of this levy from the following sources and amounts. Water Retail Fund, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-three and fifty cents. Sewer Fund, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, one hundred and five dollars and fifty-one cents. Stormwater Management Fund, two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four and twenty-five cents. Surtax Capital Project Fund, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. Downtown Initiatives Fund, one million, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand, zero, forty-five dollars and fifteen cents. This abatement item was provided at the committee of the whole meeting held on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and this ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Thank you, trustee Shaw. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
I'm glad Kevin's taking this over.
Are there any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item twenty-seven, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Next, we have item twenty-eight, trustee Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion adopting ordinance two zero two four dash O dash fifty-eight, abating a portion of the tax year, two thousand twenty-four, village of Tinley Park property taxes extended for one eight five zero one Convention Center Drive, Tinley Park, Cook County, Illinois, developed an incentive agreement for the Tinley Park Hotel and Convention Center.
I will second that.
Go ahead.
Thank you. In July of two thousand seventeen, the village of Tinley Park entered into agreements with Elementary School District one five nine, Rich Township High School District two twenty-seven, and the Harp Group, Inc., related to the hotel property located at one eight five zero one Convention Center Drive and attached to the village's convention center facility. Under these agreements, the three governments, the village, one five nine, and two twenty-seven, will abate fifty percent of the respective government's property taxes extended for the property for a period of ten years or a cumulative and collective four million dollars in abatement, whichever comes first. This ordinance represents the seventh year of the abatement. This abatement was, this abatement item was provided at the committee of the whole meeting held on November sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, and this ordinance is eligible for adoption.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item twenty-eight, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. We finally landed. Item twenty-nine, is there a motion to consider appointing resolution two zero two four dash R dash zero, I'm sorry, dash one four seven, providing for and authorizing landing rights to Santa Claus in the village of Tinley Park?
I'll move.
I will second. Oh. Give it to Bill.
Ho, ho, ho.
The resolution would allow the necessary approvals for Santa Claus to land in Tinley Park as often is deemed appropriate. This resolution is eligible for adoption. The resolution provides for and authorizing landing rights to Santa Claus in the village of Tinley Park, Cook, and Will County, whereas the United States Federal Aviation Authority, more commonly referred to as the FAA, is responsible for all flights and landing operations in the continental United States and therefore requires precise coordination for any and all domestic flying. And whereas, in the past sixty-eight years, thousands of man-made objects have been thrown into the atmosphere around this planet, thereby further complicating the safe movement of any flying machines and/or sleighs. Whereas, the Illinois State Department of Aviation directs that local authorities establish the necessary approval for any flights to land within the state except at registered airports. And whereas, the sheriffs of Cook and Will Counties further delegate that authority when properly approved to the municipalities of those counties. And whereas, any miniature sleigh with eight tiny reindeer shall designate the first reindeer to respond to landing signals with his blinking red nose. And whereas, said sleigh shall be full of toys and will not exceed the air travel weight low limit. And whereas, the driver shall be a jolly old elf of outstanding character and shall have in his possession a good flying record. Now therefore be it resolved that the president, clerk, and village board of Tinley Park, representing the great citizens of the community, provide Santa Claus with all approvals necessary in whatever order required to land at the homes as often as he deems appropriate on Tuesday evening, December fourth, two thousand twenty-four, and Monday morning, December twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Be it further resolved that the police department, the public works department, and other municipal agencies shall provide speedy and helpful assistance to guarantee Saint Nick's movement throughout the world. Passed this seventeenth day of December, two thousand twenty-four. Signed by village president, Michael W. Glatz, village clerk, Nancy M. O'Connor, and trustees, William P. Brady, Dennis Mahoney, Kenneth Shaw, William Brennan, Michael Mueller, and Colleen Sullivan. Maybe they could use your helipad.
Maybe.
Meet Diana.
They're not tiny reindeers. I don't know why they keep putting the tiny reindeers and miniature sleigh in there.
Maybe they're babies.
They're big ones.
It's something to look into, Pat. You're right.
And they're fuzzy.
That's big. That's big. Fuzzy bears. Maybe they're stopping at Matt Walsh's house.
We should have pulled this one up to the beginning of the agenda.
Are there any?
While there were kids here.
Are there any, are you able to stop at the Met Hall Center? Are there any comments from the board?
I'm, I'm good.
Santa doesn't fly drones, does he?
Just make sure you, just make sure you leave cookies or donuts for Santa.
That's right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call for item twenty-nine, trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Item thirty, receive comments from the staff.
Yes, Mayor. Just like to thank our staff for a great and successful two thousand twenty-four and that we are looking for a even better two thousand twenty-five. So, thank you for all the staff and all that they've done. And also, thank you for the board for supporting us for getting the job done. Thank you.
Well said, Pat. Well said.
Thank you, Pat. Anyone else on that table? Nope. You just smiling, Steve, or you got something?
Smiling.
Okay.
Smiling's my favorite.
And jolly. Your little tiny reindeer.
I understand.
Dropping coal at Matt's house. Table to the right, Don or Danny, have anything? Nope.
Maybe John does?
He does. That's why I asked him first. So, I wanted to bring to you guys to consider, it's, the whole conversation over this, this water bill, the administration fee by a select few is just getting out of hand. A lot of things that they're saying is unfortunately not true. And the, and the parts that this staff and this board have to deal with, nothing that has to, this was done over three previous administrations, two different village managers, and basically a whole board and staff. The, they went fourteen years without raising any type of water rates, right? None of us want to, none of us want to pay more. Everything else is going up. I mean, the cable bill's like three hundred and thirty dollars now a month. Every time that Oaklawn has charged, has been charged more by the city of Chicago, they pass that on to Tinley Park. And so, for fourteen years, two different administrations, no one ever raised the rates. And like John has said a million times, every time I ask him about it, even if Oaklawn raised the rates three percent, and we did a half percent, for fourteen years, it'd be seven percent, which is a huge difference. And therefore, unfortunately, which you'll hear a million times by John and Pat and Hannah, these water funds are so in the red and underfunded. Nothing that any of us did. It's just the fact that they never raised the rates from what we were charged from Oaklawn. They just kept eating it and eating it. And these funds are, are, were in trouble. And then the other part of it, the quarterly versus the, the versus the bimonthly, which my staff wanted to do it, we pay millions of dollars for the usage of water to Oaklawn ahead of time over three months. Every month, the village is paying Oaklawn, I think, canna, Pat, is that correct? We pay them monthly? Basically?
Essentially, yes.
And so, we pay that monthly, and the village isn't getting paid for three months. And so, it's hard to run the day-to-day operations when you're paying millions of dollars over the course of a couple of months, and there's no revenue coming in whatsoever. It's really hard for them to move money around. Therefore, they thought it would be easier for the village everyday functions to go to bimonthly. There was, there was no reason behind it, other than just basically the village sitting waiting, and then you have, on average, you have roughly fifteen hundred people per month that are late paying their bill and having water shut-offs. So now, when you're short all that money, plus you add another fifteen hundred people per month that are not paying their month, their water bill, it makes it very difficult for finance to keep things in order and pay bills. So therefore, that's why they came up with, and then there's so much ad administrative that you never get recouped. The phone calls, they spend all day long on the phone talking to people about, oh, my bill's wrong. And then they didn't, they didn't pay their bills, so they have to shut their water off. And then they have to turn it back on. Then you're sending staff out there. By going from quarterly to bimonthly, Public Works is busier now than they've ever been because the actual shut-offs have actually gone up, not gone down. So, there's nothing in it for the village whatsoever to do it bimonthly other than try and shore up some of that money that we constantly keep paying out. John, do you want to add some of the, the history on that more than any of us know? You've been in Public Works for twenty-five plus years.
Yes, sir. Um, as you mentioned, you know, when I became a director, that was one of the first things that we started working on as a department was updating the water rate study that hasn't been done since two thousand and ten. With, you know, going through all of that data, that was exactly what you mentioned, was that we have not increased our water rates since then. So, every year when we receive an update from Oaklawn, there's a rate increase. And there was an update from Chicago, there's a rate increase. Both of those rate increases were an exact pass-through to the residents. So for the residents that were mistaken with the complaints that said, you know, the village raises their rates every year, that, that is an incorrect statement. The rate increases were a pass-through from the other two agencies that we receive our water from. So, for, for many years, we have not been able to directly fund the maintenance requirements of our system. And that was one of the things that, you know, as we were doing this water rate study, we realized that there was over two million dollars a year that was being transferred from the general fund to our water fund. Now, that water fund is one of the few enterprise funds we have with the village here that's, you know, essentially supposed to be self-sustaining. And we were not doing that. You know, again, as a resident myself, I, you know, nobody wants to see their bills go up, but, you know, cost of living increases every year. Well, this is one thing that did not increase for over a decade. And, you know, hate to be the bearer of bad news, but, you know, this, this is a system that needs to be maintained. And if we don't maintain it, it's gonna hit a point where it's gonna fall apart very rapidly. And we, you know, tried to take a very delicate approach with this. One of the static approaches that we were able to find many other communities utilize was the administration fee. You know, not understanding exactly the consumption of what every resident's gonna have every year. You know, you can't, you can guesstimate on what each resident will utilize every year for consumption, but the flat rate of nine dollars was able to help us improve infrastructure repairs and funding. It is earmarked for, you know, MFT or, or pavement management. It's earmarked for some other infrastructure funding. We, you know, did some adjustments on the shut-off rates. We did some adjustments on some other things. You know, our late fee is, again, some of the lowest in the area. The shut-off fee had to get adjusted, but it's still some of the lowest in the area. And even with all of these adjustments that we made, we still have yet to do an increase on the rate that's gonna cause us to put that system into the, into the black on the budgeting. We're still, we're still slowing the bleeding, but we're, we're not putting it into the black by what we've done. And, you know, it's a hard conversation to have with any resident because they, you know, they tend to think that we're, you know, making money off of this, but we're, we're not. We're, we're not even barely breaking even.
So how, do you have any idea, John, how many million per year we have to transfer from the general fund to fund this system since there was no raises over the last, over a decade?
So, up, up until recently, with these recent adjustments, it was over two million dollars a year. Now, with the, the current adjustments, you know, doing the, the administration fee and some of the other adjustments, we're still close to a million dollars a year that we're gonna be in the red.
Did you have a chance to look up for the low usage? What are they paying per gallon, per thousand?
So, just water rates alone, we're at, I believe it's seven sixty a gallon. Have to confirm that. But at the last, last study we did, it was seven fifty-three, when we were looking at this last month. There is an increase coming in January from, again, a pass down. But seven fifty-three, and again, this is purely water consumption. This has nothing to do-
Seven fifty-three is our cost?
Per, yes.
What are we charging for low usage?
For when you say low usage, or in that first tier usage?
Yeah, for people that are in that lower tier, what are we charging?
I don't have that in front of me right now. But it was, it was, it was, again, that was one of the other things we did is to charge the higher users a higher rate based on that. And I think we were trying to have the lower users at cost, and then the higher users, which obviously have the larger consumption and a larger demand on the system, were slightly higher.
I, I, this, I'm just looking at the original. I have to go into the system to check the current water rate again because of pass-through increases that could apply to us. But when we did the water rate study for the four thousand, the lowest tier, so four thousand, if I monthly, would be roughly fifty point fifty, fifty, sorry, fifty dollars and fifty-five cents. And when we changed it, it would have gone up fifty, to fifty-four dollars and ninety cents. So it would have been a two dollar and eighteen cents change per month.
But we don't know, saying if, if he's able to find it, how much we're charging per thousand gallons? Does that say?
No, it's a combination of water and sewer, and it's at the multiplier of four thousand gallons.
A lot of work into it.
Yeah. So, I believe it was almost at cost.
If it doesn't, we're basically, we're paying now seven dollars and fifty-three cents-
Yeah.
-per thousand. And there hasn't been any raise in roughly-
Charging seven dollars and thirty-three cents.
And the other thing that I'll just kind of bring up too, I mean, when we brought this before the board, the, the original report that we got back had recommended that we increase water rates sixty percent over five years. And obviously, we knew that was a lot to ask. We knew that would be a hard ask for the board. None of us, neither staff nor you all, wanted to do that. So that's why we moved and, and asked for some of these other changes. Again, the bimonthly to help with cash flow because we weren't going to increase it sixty percent over five years on residents. So that was one way, again, to help with cash flow. That's why we did different tiers to try to help the people in the low usage that they weren't paying, you know, more than necessary for their low usage and low consumption. That's why we did look at the admin fee, and we did compare it to other communities and whatnot. So, staff worked really hard to do our due diligence to try to keep this as sustainable and maintainable as possible. And, and that's kind of where we're at now and why we did what we did.
So over fourteen years, we fell behind sixty percent by them not raising?
About that, yes.
Yeah. So,
and let me, you know, expand on that. We have gotten a preemptive clarification from the city of Chicago per their contract. They plan on utilizing their maximum allowance of five percent a year for increases for the next three years.
Wow. Of course they will. Yeah, we're paying for Brennan's budget.
Want, want to comment there? I, I forget, what's the exact date that the, our changes went into effect?
January first. It was January first.
It's January first, okay. So I, I, we don't, I'm sure we don't want to be chasing this continually, making changes, changes, especially, I, I know there's a lot of behind the scenes that has to do there. But I, I, I would offer that once we get at least a full year of experience and data, at some time in two thousand twenty-five, that we, we sit back and, and look at actual experience and what's happening to the extent there's something else we can do to tweak it, to change it, whether that's to help on, on the village's end, you know, with, with just better total or, you know, kind of move things around to, to balance. I don't, I'm not necessarily optimistic that there's gonna be a lot of opportunity for that, but I think that's something we could probably commit to once, it's too soon now, but once we have at least a full year of experience, maybe, you know, eighteen months.
And we talked about it briefly earlier, but, at, at the finance committee meeting, but the water fund is finally starting, because we have five different water funds. So the water fund itself is finally starting to get back on track. The one thing I forgot to mention is that a lot of that revenue in there is also bond proceeds similar to the Harmony Square fund. So that's why it does look- So that's why it does look as healthy as it does, but it is getting back on track. With that being said, the, the other water funds are in the red, and so what we'll have to do is take the funds from sixty now and transfer that. The funds that we're finally making up, now those are gonna go away when we have to transfer those to get the other water funds out of the red. So it's this never-ending cycle of trying to get all these funds back into the green.
Because we're playing catch-up for fourteen years. John, do you have anything else to add on that, or I'm, I'm gonna move on to board comment?
No, again, I, I think we've hit all of the spots, it's, you know, it's right now, you know, one of our most difficult endeavors with this adjustment is the fact that, you know, we have a lot of shut-offs per cycle. We've gone from three, three cycles, having a quarterly to two cycles. So every month, we're shutting off upwards of two hundred residents each month. It's very endearing on our staff. I think I just heard from our office administrator that we sent out over seven hundred warning letters of, you know, shut-off, so that's, you know, out of, you know, ten thousand customers, seven hundred of them are not paying their bill in a timely manner, and that is very time-consuming for our staff.
Have we been able to come up with potential reasons for that, for the increase?
It could be a combination of many things, there's, I, you know, I didn't see the mail, I forgot about it.
People just getting used to the difference?
Yeah, I've gotten, you know, getting used to the difference, can't afford it, and we hear just about everything. You know, everybody's got some different reason or excuse, I mean, some people just are bad with their management of their, their money and wait till the last minute to make the payment.
All right, next we have item thirty-one, receive comments from the board. Just to, to add to the, add to the water, one thing I love about our village, our staff and the board does a great job on being good stewards of our money, as unfortunately, everyone in this room is stuck playing sixty percent catch-up for fourteen years. July first, it's the ordinance, it's supposed to, the admin fee is supposed to go up. I would like to ask the board if they would consider giving staff direction to freeze the increase for, for the following year, and just leave it as is and not do the, the next increase for the, for the administrative fee. And instead of, yeah, because the problem is, again, it's, it's six, it's fifty-four bucks to leave it as is over twelve months, instead of raising your rates. One way or another, there's, there's three different ways you can do it. You either do like all the other, all the other taxing bodies do, and just say five percent, because that's what everyone does. Or you could just increase the water rates more, or you could do a small nominal fee of fifty-four dollars, which like Hannah just said, is really helping make a detonant. So, either way, someone has to charge it. And so, the only difference is, we're just being transparent and honest about it, and saying, this is how much we're losing, this is how much we're behind, sixty percent from the water model from Christopher Burke. And so, we're trying to catch up sixty percent. So I would just ask the board to consider changing the ordinance and just freezing it for this next year. And like Ken said, maybe six months down the road, we see, we see where we're at, we get an update, you know, with, through Ken's finance committee, and if they feel that they're really making improvements, then we address this at a column, discuss it as a board. But until then, you know, we could have easily just said, we could have raised just to cover for the police pension, which was what, seven hundred thousand? So we'd have seven hundred thousand more, and we could just eliminate the admin fee, but we don't work like that. The way our staff works, in the manager's office and our finance, we like to separate and parse every line item. And so therefore, you know, we've been great at development and keeping the tax levy at zero. I would just like to ask you guys to consider leave, freezing the admin at the current rate and not raising it when it goes up January first. So I don't know what any everyone's thoughts on that is. If there's, would it be agreement to not, to have staff prepare to change the ordinance to freeze it for next year? I think that would be great, and like I said, we could do a quarterly, right, you know? In March or April or May, you guys could readdress it and see where we're at, and, and, you know, go from there. But I'd like to ask you guys to consider freezing the, the, the increase in the admin fee.
I would support that. I'd support that as well.
All right, so, Pat and Hannah, can you guys just direct the attorneys to work on that for the January seventh, please? And then notify, I don't know how that works through Public Works and, and your whole ERP or whatever system? Great.
So, just on that, just, John alluded to it there, but the, the water fund is supposed to be an enterprise fund, which means it's supposed to break even, it's supposed to support itself, and it's not. So we don't, we don't really, we don't have the luxury of saying, oops, that admin fee's not a good idea. Because frankly, I think we all agree, it is necessary. But with some of the experience that's going on here, trying to hone in, honestly, it's a change like this, people gotta get used to it. So hopefully, we'll be optimistic and people will get used to it, and, and some of the late payments will, will settle back down to, to more historic rates, and we'll be in good shape there. I would, I would support that for the moment, we can't roll it back, it's just not the right thing.
Even with it, we're still a million dollars in the, in the red.
Yes.
Anyone else from the board have any comments?
Yeah, I'll just, I'd just say that this fund is obviously, I mean, change is hard, change is hard for everyone. I mean, this is something that I know, you know, I certainly feel for the increases, but this is, you know, one of the two most basic functions that the government is supposed to provide, the village actually provides to, to our citizens, is safety and delivery of water. I mean, this is a very necessary thing, and that's something this board is committed to, doing, you know, fiscally responsibly, taking care of the citizens. And like you said, Mr. Mayor, we've done it transparently, and we've done it responsibly. So we're trying to, I know everyone's trying to do their best to, you know, while keeping costs low, but also doing the necessary updates to our system to continue to deliver, you know, water to our residents. So I think the, there's a lot of communities that aren't in the position that we are, but you know, that, they're, they're charging a lot more than we are. So I mean, this is, this is, you know, one of those things, it's a tough pit to swallow, but I know it's something that needed to be done. So, you know, appreciate everyone's efforts on it, and, and I'm fully supportive of freezing that admin fee, but.
I mean, the rates, they haven't raised.
Yeah, the rates, right. But, yeah, no, I, I'd, I'd have to agree with everyone's comments in regards to it, so appreciate everyone's work on it.
Anyone else? Mr. Brady, I know you have to have something.
Just to say I agree with Mr. Brennan and-
Well, just in general, this is your board comment.
It's where you wish in one a merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas and a happy new year. Where you all have good health and happiness and a blessed new year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hopefully, I didn't use up all my time on that, different topic. I just, I just wanted to say really quick, my thanks to, in particular, the, the fire department, and, but everybody in public safety. The last village board meeting, I was attending remotely, so I didn't, telephone's always a pain, so I didn't bring it up then. Thanksgiving evening, my next-door neighbor's garage, which is right next, they're only about seven feet apart, my house and their garage caught fire. It was about ten o'clock in the evening, it was a very scary time. Fire department arrived very quickly, practically by the time I even knew that it was going on. A, a very observant neighbor around the corner came, practically kicked in my front door, telling me that he thought my house was on fire, and it turned up to be my, my neighbor's garage. Fortunately, everybody was safe, some damage to the garage, but it was, the, the response was very professional and very timely. So I, I was very much appreciative, and I do know that the, my next-door neighbor and the, and the whole neighborhood was also very appreciative. So I just want to say thank you and, and good job to the fire department in particular, just being involved in that.
If you can, anyone else? Just like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and kind of echo what Pat said. Thank you to all of our staff that have made a lot of these things possible that we can do. Their hard work, and on a sad note, we are, he was the president of our labor advisory commission, Larry Nichols. Everyone, everyone in here, I think, knows who Larry Nichols is. He unfortunately passed away, so that was sad to hear that. He was a, yeah, he was a business agent for Sprinkler Fitters two eighty-one. Great guy. He was, so rest in peace. Anyone else? Next we have item thirty-two, receive comments from the public. Would anyone from the public care to comment? Record reflect, there are none. Do we have anything for item thirty-three? Can I have, item thirty-three, can I have a motion to adjourn the executive session to discuss the following? A, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body, to determine its validity?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, call the roll? No, I'm sorry, can I have a, can I have a motion to adjourn the, the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Brennan?
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion passes, we are adjourned, and we will not be coming back. Hope everyone has a Merry Christmas.